Good evening. Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 City of Minot Planning Commission Meeting. Call the roll.
Bowman. Domes. Bacon.
Yes.
Gates. Hoggalter.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Leiter. Longton.
Yes.
Menham. Nezdal. Offerdahl.
Yes.
And Pontenilla.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
All right, with that, can we stand and have the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item number four, approval of the June 6, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have moved to approve.
I'll second.
Present.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler, second by Commissioner Focken. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, see none, we'll close, close discussion and call the roll.
Bowman. Bacon.
Yes.
Hoggalter.
Yes.
Iverson. Kibler.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offerdahl.
Yes.
And Pontenilla.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, moving on to agenda item number five, this is a continued open, open public hearing for a case 2023 6-2 zoning map amendment with planned unit development, citizenality. A public hearing request by Askel Group owner of the zoning map amendment for C, from CBD, Central Business District and C2 General Commercial District to CBD with a PUD overlay. So with that, we'll turn it over, it is still an open public hearing, so I'll just turn it over to city staff just for a quick overview.
Thank you Chairman Offerdahl, members of the commission. Recomending the item be tabled, so should the planning commission concur with staff, any motion to table the item must include the date, time, and location, so the next planning commission date would be August 1st at City Hall, 5:30 PM.
Okay. This is, the public hearing is still open, so at this time I will offer anybody that wants to come up and speak on behalf of this agenda item. I'll give the same, same offer to anybody that wishes to speak against this agenda item. Okay, so we're gonna leave this public hearing open, I would recommend a motion from the commissioners.
Yes, I would move to table this motion till August in, in keeping with recommendations from staff.
Okay, is that a motion to table this till August 1st at 5:30 PM at City Hall?
Correct.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kibler, Commissioner Kibler, sorry?
I second it.
Okay, who, which one got? Second by Commissioner Pontenilla. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll?
Bowman.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Hoggalter.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offerdahl.
Yes.
And Pontenilla.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number six. 2023-7-4 zoning map amendment, South Main Street, public hearing request by Jonathan Lane on behalf of Providence House applicant representative for Trinity Health Foundation owner for zoning map amendment from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to CBD Central Business District. Purpose of the zoning map amendment is to provide an inpatient treatment services and is defined within the land development ordinance of the City of Minot as hospital. That will turn it over to city staff for findings and report.
Thank you Chairman Offerdahl, members of the commission. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, it's just east of the former Trinity Hospital site. So this, this property is also the former site of the Trinity Guest House, which was utilized similar to a Ronald McDonald House. Family and friends of inpatients would be permitted temporary housing while their loved ones receive treatment. Here's the applicant letter, applicant's letter of intent, which can be found in staff's written report, is exhibit two. So in summary, the request is rezoned to CBD Business District in order, Central Business District in order to provide inpatient medical services. Proposed use would be defined as a hospital in the, in the land development ordinance, which is not permitted in the current C1 zoning. So the land development ordinance maintains a distinction between a hospital and a clinic, those are the two definitions that we have within our land development ordinance. A hospital provides inpatient services, that means overnight stays, and a clinic provides outpatient services, that's visitations and then leaving immediately same day. And when reviewing other communities, appears fairly standard that this is the application, so hospitals would be overnight stays, clinics would be not overnight stays, right? Their services will be primarily targeted towards pregnant women and women with children. The current zoning of the subject property is C1 Neighborhood Commercial, and the subject property is primarily surrounded by CBD Central Business District and then what's R3Bs, R3Bs are medium density residential district, similar to our RM. If you recall, we just adopted a new future land use map, this is the new future land use map that's adopted, the, the future land use for the property is denoted as downtown fringe, so this is the area that surrounds the core of downtown. I also want to highlight that a tremendous amount of effort and focus went into delineating what the boundaries of the downtown core and the downtown fringe were as we went through the comprehensive planning process. These are just some site photos facing northeast and east. As we're evaluating a rezone, one of the components of evaluating a rezone is alignment with the future land use map. And so here's the table showing where the zoning districts, where CBD and the future land use category downtown fringe intersect. So you find the DF purple, and you go over and then the ones that are filled in black are the ones where it's appropriate, so we have RH, that would be a high density residential zone. We have a C2 General Commercial District and then a CBD, which is Central Business District, so any of those three zones we would typically find appropriate within the downtown fringe, based on utilizing this table for guidance and, and finding that it aligns with the comprehensive plan. Within the comprehensive plan, we have these various excerpts that provide more detail with regard to what are each of these future land use designations. So just in reading what the downtown fringe excerpt provides, the DF category is an extension of the downtown core, but may have more flexible development standards than the downtown mixed use district. Downtown fringe areas are generally separated from downtown by physical barriers, including Broadway Avenue, Burdick Expressway, and the railroad. Opportunities to improve connections downtown are limited, but should be continued to be explored, and development characteristics include less intense uses than the downtown mixed use, which is our downtown core, but retains emphasis on walkable development, expanded range of commercial uses with more non-retail than, than the downtown mixed use, again, with more non-retail. All new building construction should be multi-story, again, all new building construction should be multi-story. Adaptive reuse of vacant, underutilized buildings, buildings oriented toward the street. I also want to remind you that this is one of the many buildings of Trinity that are now vacant, since they have relocated by and large, to their new site off of 37th Avenue Southwest, and that this would be the first potential repurposing of a primary, or a former rather, Trinity Hospital property. So these are the findings of fact, and I kind of want to dig in a little bit deeper, deeper because I've received tremendous amount of comment just today, which is how it works sometimes. So we have four evaluative criteria on how we're gonna determine, how you should and must determine whether or not a rezone should occur. So this body, or any body for that matter, cannot make a decision based on a protected class. Okay, so a protected class would include those with disabilities, alcoholism is a disability. So you cannot take into consideration a lot of the comments that were, obviously, we're not gonna not forward comments to you, but I just want to remind this body to ensure that we evaluate the rezone with regard to the four criteria, that you are required to evaluate any rezone application before you. And I'm gonna go over in a little bit more detail for the edification of the audience, we have more people here than we have the rest, the prior six months that we've had this year, so section 9.17H provides for when a rezone is justified, so it can be justified due to a change in conditions, an error in the zoning map, or by, in order to fulfill the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. So I just showed you the comp plan, I showed you the matrix. Staff professionally finds it aligns with, alignment with the comp plan. The city and other agencies is the second one, section 9.1-7H2, the city and other agencies will be able to provide necessary public services and facilities to serve the proposed development. The city and other agencies have determined that we do have the ability to provide the services, it is an existing structure with existing infrastructure and immediate adjacent right of way, there's really no more intense use being proposed, and so there is no concern with being able to provide adequate services. I also want to point out that this one served the proposed development, that is why we ask what is being proposed in a development, is do we have adequate services to provide it, there's a big difference between some developments, a seven acre RM multifamily residential district that simply wants to put a myriad of single family residences on, on it, that's much less intense than it is, you know, just recent examples, the 72 unit dual, you know, apartment complex, so we need to know what we're getting into, I guess, as far as that, to make sure that we have adequate services to provide. Section 9.1-7H3 requires that the proposed zoning map amendment will not substantially diminish the condition or value of property in the vicinity. Staff finds no evidence that the zoning map amendment, the CBD, will diminish the condition or value of property within the vicinity. So the zoning map amendment itself, will, will it substantially diminish the condition or value of property in the vicinity? Staff found no evidence, we have no evidence of that. Section 9.1-7H4 requires the zoning change to be consistent with the purpose of land development ordinance of the City of Minot, comp plan, and other adopted plans and policies of the city. Adopted plans and policies of the city, obviously, the city is motivated to find repurpose, repurposing of Trinity's former buildings that they prior, previously occupied, as well as its alignment with the comp plan, as I noted in section 9.1-7H1. And then as far as alignment with the code, clinics, both clinics and hospitals, the only two uses that would even be remotely related to this are permitted uses within the central, central business district, which is what they're proposing to rezone to, so their proposal is compliant with all of these, with the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and obviously, many other discussions that have occurred at city council. At the time of writing the report, we didn't receive comments, obviously, like I mentioned, I sent you, I think, four of them, four separate comments, you should have received those via email from, from Nicole. There could be more, but that's why I wanted to clarify precisely how we evaluate these, is that some of those were leading in an area that should not be the reason that you're evaluating this, this proposal, so even at that, at the end of the day, Minot, you know, the planning commission has the authority to evaluate this proposal and make a recommendation to city council. I'll provide you staff's recommendations, the staff recommends the planning commission adopt staff findings of fact, which I provided, and support the rezone with no conditions, so I will certainly stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff from the commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Van Dyke, I'm just a little unclear, so it's a Trinity property when it's a C1, right, and now it'll still be a Trinity property with the new Central Business District designation?
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Kibler. I'll, I'll defer that question to the applicant with regard to the arrangement they have as far as acquiring or leasing, or I'm not entirely sure 100% exactly their ownership arrangement, and I just know that the proposed use, that Trinity did sign off as owner to allow the applicant to pursue this, not 100% sure of the ownership and function after they
Okay, thank you, I didn't need to really know the deep
Right.
legal ownership issue, but I, I'm a little curious as to the, the change in zoning then is a result of a change in the comprehensive plan, rather than of the kind of usage of this structure?
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Kibler, no, so the rezone is, is the product of the change in use from what would be like the Ronald McDonald House, where like loved ones would stay while their family and, yeah, loved ones were, were receiving care, they would stay there overnight. Now this would be what we class as a hospital use. I provided the letter of intent that you can evaluate, and then the applicant, I believe, is here to provide more context if needed with regard to the specificity of, of the proposed use.
Yeah, thanks, it, it just to see that they're both kind of medical services, or, so I don't know what the distinction is between a alcoholic, a clinic to help alcoholic women, and then this new usage, how is that a mandated zoning change? That's
Again, it's how we define it, so our definitions, so our definition of a hospital is inpatient care. The prior was accessory to the hospital, if you will, it was only staying there if your loved one was receiving care, it wasn't like a permanent dwelling, you might stay there one day, two days, for a week. But it was just to be in close proximity, to have that availability of a bed, to support your loved one who's receiving care, so it wasn't that the individuals within that building were receiving any care, they were staying there
Okay.
and then going to the hospital to be with their loved ones who are receiving care.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Van Dyke, I could do, just one more, I think, related question is, you know, from a, a move from a commercial C1 to a central business district, these are both proprietary zoning districts, is Trinity a for-profit entity? Or a not-for-profit entity that it requires this kind of zoning, I mean, doesn't have a special zoning for a hospital, or does not, no such zoning exists?
Yeah, Commissioner Offerdahl, some communities do have hospital zoning districts, we do not, sometimes they have hospital future land use designations. No, we allow hospitals in, in a few districts. At the end of the day, that's how we handle it here, and it's neither here nor there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, then I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir, go ahead and step up to the, if you can, you guys can sign in your name and your address there on that little sign-in sheet.
Sir.
I think I got a pen there. Appreciate that.
Hello, council, my name is Jonathan Lane, I propose this
You speak up.
Agenda to bring here.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So my name is Jonathan Lane, I propose this agenda to bring before you guys. We currently operate a drug and alcohol treatment center in McKenzie County, and since the services have been kind of cut down here in Minot, we've been seeing quite a big influx of people needing our services. And we actually were open July 5th, was our first year. We have the state come through, they check out everything, doctorize, cross your Ts, and they're very, very thorough about what they got going on, and they asked us to maybe open up a women's, pregnant women and women with children in addiction center. They seem to be having a pretty big need for that. And part of the requirements for having one of those is to have a NICU close by. So there's not one of those available in McKenzie County. So this is near and dear to my heart, and this is near and dear to my staff that work for me, we have medical director, we have two RNs, and this is just in Watford, we have four licensed addiction counselors, we have over 16 residential staff members that are there 24/7, 365. This is a very well structured program, we're having excellent results, so from the comments that I've been hearing, there's nothing like this in North Dakota, we brought it, some of the elements out here from a few other states that we've got the ideas from, and we seem to be having some really, really good luck, we work very close with federal parole and probation, we work very closely with the state probation and parole officers, and then just the community in general, we tend to put on a lot of events over there in McKenzie County, we kind of try to get them out in the community, we get them jobs, we get them functioning, we get their licenses, we get their birth certificates, we get everything back that they've lost if they want to do this program. If they don't, then we have options that they will not be staying with us, and we'll move them on too, because we are not a get out of jail free card, we're not an option to sit here and, and waste our time. Unfortunately, at this time, we have a list of 44 people that are requiring our services. So if you can think about needing treatment or needing help for an alcohol or a drug problem, and you call me, and I have to tell you, I'm sorry, we can't get you in for 30 days. There was five ODs between, between Williams County and McKenzie County, Saturday and Sunday, one death. This is a real serious problem, and we're barely scratching the surface of it. And we would be honored and would be a privilege to come to Minot and mirror the program that we're doing there and bring it to somewhere like Minot, I think you guys would receive this very well, I think we would love the opportunity to come here and bring our services with us. I have a, a team lined up, and we gotta do some training, and we'll recruit some locals from here too, and bring in some more medical personnel, and get in touch with local law enforcement and local first responders, we'll get them on board with us, and we'll CPS on something like this will be a big deal with us too, social services will be involved with us. We're gonna have the inpatient treatment, as well, I believe Mr. Van Dyke is classified as a hospital. Generally, insurance dictates our program, so it's about a 32 day stay, but then we offer outpatient services as well too, so it's not just a spin cycle. Like you go to treatment and suddenly you're cured, isn't how this works. So our program is usually about eight to nine months long in that general area. And with this dynamic here, we'll be able to, like, because a lot of women, they don't want to go to treatment because they have to leave their kids. And it is heartbreaking, you know, because now we're affecting mom and we're affecting children at the same time. So we talked with the state, and this is kind of the dynamic that we're looking at to go with this, so we'll provide 24 hour daycare, we'll go ahead and we'll start building some life skills, some cooking, some parenting classes, we'll get them back in touch with, you know, CPS, social services as much as we can, and also doing a reunification program. So if you come to treatment and you do not have your children, we're gonna start working on these skills and these attributes in order to get your children back and try to get back in the life, but we are hold your feet to the fire program. This is a do or die situation, this isn't cute, this isn't funny, this is real life, this is death for most addicts and most alcoholics. So if you want it, we're here for you, if you don't, then we'll try to figure something else out. But, um, I think, I think, what's the two programs we have here, we've already got one successful, we're just gonna do the exact same thing that we're doing down there and bring it right here, and we are fully transparent. You guys can come through, check it out, and see what we've got going on, and, and maybe offer some suggestions or some critiques, it'd be more than appreciated, because it takes all of us to do this. It's not just us, we have, we're pretty involved with everybody down there too. Appreciate your time. Guys, any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Lane, anybody, anybody got any questions for Mr. Lane? Maybe he'll just hold tight, just in case something else comes up.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in, or for this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Come on up, ma'am. If you can just sign in on that podium, that'd be great.
I guess my question is, what does it mean when it says with no conditions? And so my backyard is directly with the Trinity Guest Home backyard. I think it's a great thing that you want to do. I think it's wonderful. I just want to know what the no conditions mean. Is it going to be eventually changed into something else? We have grandchildren in our area. I'm just wondering what's going to happen if the women and the children thing doesn't work out. Are you going to try and do something different? I'm a little worried about sex offenders being in the area. I want to protect my grandchildren and the children in our neighborhood. And, you know, you say you're going to have, children are going to be there. Is there going to be an area for them where they can be children? Because it's, there's no area there for them to play outside or anything? Are you going to have it, a fence around so that they can be safe because people fly up and down that alley pretty fast? I'm just wondering, you know, what the no conditions mean. That's my question.
Thank you. And we'll let city staff, you want to address that, John?
Thank you, yeah. So typically, we don't tie conditions to rezones unless it's like a planned unit development, or there's some unique request tied to it. This would just be a straight rezone request, and so I just can't think of any reason that we would tie conditions to it. We could ask the applicant to entertain a development agreement, which would be a bilateral agreement, to voluntarily enter into some agreement with city, but we can't unilaterally require them to do something as far as what would be a condition. The other thing I'm a little hesitant to do, and I would look to legal to provide guidance, but I presume that if we would require or ask the applicant to enter into a bilateral agreement, which would limit it to women and women with children, that we then stepping on the toes of gender is part of that discriminatory practice. And so I just don't, I just don't think that is, yeah.
Right now, he's.
Nick, if you're paying attention, I'll repeat it if you need me to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Van Dyck?
As far as, yeah, that works, if you want to go there. Finish one thought at a time.
I want, if they were to follow through and have a daycare center as part of this facility, would they have to go through a particular petitioning to gain a license for daycare activities?
Through the state, yes.
Through the state?
Yeah. Nick, so the question was, is there any, so typically on a straight rezone, we don't attribute any conditions unless there's some extremely unique circumstance tied to the request, like a planned unit development typically will have conditions because it's deviating from the traditional code. But with this one being a straight rezone, just a simple request in alignment with the comp plan, I'm hesitant to incorporate conditions such as, so one of the questions was that there's a fear that it won't remain just women and women with children. And then talking about sex offenders, so presumably men, men's sex offenders. Are we then treading on potential for discrimination based on gender as opposed to just based on a protected class of being disabled?
I think the answer to that is the commission has to evaluate what is in front of it. It doesn't have to speculate as to hypotheticals that may be coming forward. It just has to evaluate what is in front of it, make a decision with regard to that. In this case, as a particular proposal, offer the zoning change, and the staff would have the ability to condition it or not. And in this case, it's not been conditioned, and I don't see an issue with that.
Thanks, Nick. I was going to say as well, generally, yeah, generally, we, there are communities out there who provide development agreements with a myriad of conditions for every single proposal that comes through. Minot is not one of those communities. We are not staffed to do that. And based on the motivation or perceived motivation of a lot of these concerns being specifically related to the treatment facility nature of the request as opposed to just the base zone change request, there's just no reason to incorporate conditions. Modification to the built environment based on, it's my understanding that even any modification to the structure based on conversations with the applicant would be internal, and there wouldn't be necessarily any external modifications and expansion, not to mention that we don't even have fencing requirements in central business district. We don't have parking requirements in central business district. So I just don't want to incorporate a bunch of conditions related to that. I also want to emphasize, too, that the applicant could have come in and said, you know, we're going to put an ice cream parlor here. Would have not had conditions related to some of these things, and probably everybody would be excited about that ice cream parlor. And then the very next day upon getting approval, literally open, the hospital use is defined in our land development ordinance. So that purpose, again, is, that purpose statement that we do require from the applicant is strictly for us to evaluate our ability to provide services for the intensity of that use. They were to come in with the permits, and we had no, like, say, not enough water pressure or sewer, and we simply deny their permit. They could do a myriad of other uses on that site, so it wouldn't be flat denial of them able to use their property. But that is, that's the reason that we do request the purpose statement to accompany any rezone requests, is just so we can evaluate whether or not we have the ability and provide those basic services to the site. I hope that makes sense. I would hope that neighbors can work together to incorporate some of these basic modifications to promote harmony amongst adjoining land uses and, but I don't know that it's, from a planning staff level prerogative to incorporate or condition an approval, given that we have many other instances of CBD functioning in harmony directly adjoining R3B. So that, there's many other places in our downtown where that's the case. In fact, we have Heavy Industrial right next to CBD, and there seem to be getting, you know, I mean, there's just so many zoning districts downtown, and by and large, everybody's getting along without having fences or restricting it to a certain gender. I hope that that kind of makes sense, but.
I was just wondering if, oh, sorry. Yeah, I was just wondering about the whole no conditions. I guess that you meant was for the zoning, not necessarily the facility.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Okay.
Conditions typically are also applied when there is some modification to the proposal in order to meet one of the evaluative criteria. And we see that often in aptly named conditional use permits, right? So we're saying, in order to promote harmony with the adjoining districts, then that's when we have like additional buffering standards, things of that nature. On a zone change, that's typically not the case. Yeah, it's not that it can't be done. It's just typically not the case.
It was just a question, honestly. I didn't know how, I don't know how it all works. I just want to make sure children are going to be safe, you know, over there, too. It's a busy area, and, you know, I just didn't know what was going to happen with that building for sure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can, no, I certainly respect the concerns that overregulation might bring to any kind of development. But I, you know, we do function the cold, hard facts of zoning here, but, but, you know, the spirit and the letter of things. And I do think we need to take into consideration the concerns of neighbors when it comes to this sort of thing. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we adhere to a factual understanding exclusively. So I guess I would ask you, you know, hypotheticals, you can't know the future about what this building will be, or what your land will be, or anything. But what kind of conditions would you like to see put on this zoning change?
I just, my fear is, I guess my fear is, I don't know what's going to be going on in the neighborhood. If there's someone there, you know, watching every, you know, you just don't know what's going to happen in the neighborhood. We have lots of different things going on in our neighborhood right now. I just, I think it's a need that we need in our community, that we need for drug and alcohol. I totally agree with that. I guess my fear was that if there was going to be sex offenders that close to where my grandchildren are, that was a concern of mine. If my kids are out there playing, or my grandchildren, I mean, you know, that would be a concern for me. They need help, too. I mean, I don't want to take that away from anybody, but what I was wondering is if the, if the business would change. I totally think it's a good thing to help out women with their children and stuff like that. I'm for it. I just, I also know our area, and there's nowhere that, I mean, I feel bad for the kids. If there's going to be children there, will they be able to have somewhere to play? Whether, you know, it's a busy area. So.
Yeah, cars come fast down that street, don't they?
Very fast, very fast. They go flying up, and they come flying down. And I guess my, my fear was if there was going to be sex offenders staying in that building that close to where my grandchildren and the neighborhood grandchildren are, that was my fear. So I misunderstood when it said the no conditions. I misunderstood what that meant, and that's why I'm here, to get some answers, because I don't know all the, I don't know it all. And so I came to get some information. But I think it's a great idea, what you want to do. But I also was wondering if you had something. And after hearing what you said, you know, for the children that you're going to have there, for their safety, because it's a busy area. So, I mean, we don't really see anybody coming from, you know, the guest house in the back or anything through there, and it doesn't matter. You love everybody, you know? You want to just be careful around there, is what I'm saying. It's so busy around there, so. So anyway, I am misunderstood with the no conditions with the zoning. I thought it was pertaining to what they were going to put in that building, if they could just change it up. That was my fear, was protecting my grandchildren.
No, all great points. Mr. Lane, you said you wanted, yes, you're more than welcome to come up and answer. Any questions or comment towards there?
Thank you, Council. I guess to put some of that at ease, we do not take violent offenders, and we do not take sex offenders. We are also asking to purchase a lot next door. So not just the building, the lot comes with it next door, where we will put, are obviously approved, building that we're kind of, we're building one in Watford. Right now, we're doing a 6,000-square-foot addition on, that's just for programming. We're putting in a little gym. We're putting in a little rec room for the winter time. In Watford City, there's a lot going on in the winter. So the back of that, the building does not take up that whole lot that we would like to bring here. So the play area was already planned for the children as well. And I totally understand where you're at with this type of things. It is alarming if you haven't been around it, and these, and these guys do offend. Things do happen. They don't come to us because they're winning. They come to us for help. My phone is full of people begging for help. And so the, here's, the thing is, like, we know what they're doing 24/7. They're not driving up and down your street fast. They're not having parties. They're not showing up.
The other ones are.
Right. So we need to be aware of them, more so than what we got going on. And so, like I mentioned earlier, we are very in touch with law enforcement. We are very in tune with them as well, too. And so, and there is somebody there, if not two people there, 24/7, 365. And then the business hour, there's usually about 10 people there at all times. And, yes, ma'am. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Thank you for the questions, too, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Go ahead and sign in if you could.
And this, this may sound repetitive, but that's who I am. So just bear with me. I guess what, I think what, that was my wife Sheila, I think part of the thing is what she was getting at, is if this is set up for, and again, it's a, it's a heck of a deal. It really is for the pregnant women that need help. I totally and completely understand that. And with the problems with alcohol, I totally and completely understand that. So anyway, but my thing is, if it's set up for the pregnant women that need help, I'm fine with that. But I'm just looking, and like I said, this may have been covered. I'm just looking at the bait and switch, because we'll tell them that it's for, and this isn't against you or your, your program. It's just that we'll tell them it's for pregnant women, and we get that set up for that, and it doesn't go as planned. And then, well, let's turn it into something for, you know, again, I hate to say the sex offenders, but if you've got grandchildren, you know what I'm talking about, because there's nothing worse than we need that. And do we go through background checks on everybody, anybody who's going to be staying at these facilities, is what I need to know, if we're going to have background checks. And I know you have staff on duty, but I would also appreciate, and I know you're in touch with the Minot Police Department, it still takes time. I would appreciate if you could have some onsite security to take care of these problems before they, before they spin out of control, and before the police department has to get there. Because we all know how busy the police department is. They've got, they have other things to do. They've got other things going on, and they can't just be there to drop a hat. So I guess that's part of my, my concern, too, is that this doesn't turn in, and again, not towards you, but it doesn't turn into a bait and switch that we set it up for this. Like you said, well, we set it up for an ice cream parlor, but then we're going to turn it into something else, because not enough people are buying ice cream. Because if you tell us you're going to set it up for something else, obviously, there'd be more people here against it. So I guess my big concern is that we don't have a bait and switch. If we can get something that says, this is what it's set up for. And I don't know what you can, or if you can, do anything legally to say, this is what it's set up for. It's not set up for anything else but this. It is zoned for this. It is zoned for the pregnant women, or the women with young children that do need the help, I guess, is what I'm going for. And then I also, also, like, again, like I said, I like to see onsite security because it's, it's just a good idea, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to?
Council, I appreciate your comments. Your concerns there are very valid. And so we would not even be going this route if it wasn't brought to us as a big need for North Dakota. And so the conversations that I've had with the state is that there is nothing like this in North Dakota. And there are repeated calls to the state for this. And so this is a business, and it does function as a business. And the people that we have there are very well-trained, and they got their degrees, and they're medical doctorates and nurses, and so they need to be paid as such. And so if we were to start a business and bring these people on and not be able to pay them, I don't think that would be very functionable. So the, the need has been brought to our attention over and over about this. So I don't foresee us having trouble filling it, unfortunately. That's good and bad, because there's somewhere to go now. And, yeah, as far as the security, our staff are very well-trained. Are they law enforcement? No, they're not. But it's not just a, hey, come to work and hang out and train. I mean, there's CFR 42, there's HIPAA violations. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that they go through. It's about a five-day training process of what's going on there. And the first thing they are to do if something happens is to call 911, and then call me immediately.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for me at all? No, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak, either for or against this agenda item? If we could, we can sign that sheet and then just state your name, so we can properly address you guys up there in the podium.
My name is Barbara Skolsted, and I agree with both of the concerns that Sheila and Keith had, Cochran's. They, we live right across the street from them. So we are a street away from where this is planned. I guess my concerns, why the rezoning, I still can't wrap my head around that. We're residential, and when the hospital was there, we had extra traffic. We're residential, and when the hospital was there, we had extra traffic up and down. We had walking people, walking traffic up and down, all times of night, whatever. And that's a concern. And like Sheila, we have grandchildren that visit, and we all know that, okay, if there's a pregnant woman there, she had to have, had a partner. Are they pissed about her being here? Are they, or are they going to come looking? We have concerns about that. And the safety of the kids that are going to be there, again, that is an issue as well. And like Sheila said, there's no place really like a playground in that neighborhood. So I guess it's, it's difficult to say. And why the rezoning? And is that, how is that going to affect us as residential people? You know, we've lived in that house for almost 30 years. So, you know, why? And then what happens, like, okay, if we do this, then what about next year, we're going to do that, and we're going to, you know? Where does it end? We're concerned about our residents and our neighbors. So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you. And I, I think, John, you can correct me, but going from C1 to CB2D, that doesn't change it much from a scope.
Not going to affect our values, not going to affect our taxes, not going to affect...
Correct. I mean, currently it's commercial one right now. That's the zoning that it's currently has been and has been for a long time.
Where our house is?
Where this house is.
Where this house is?
Yes.
What about our house, a street away?
Your, your house...
What about Cochran's, which is right in the back door?
Your house will always stay R1 until you come in and ask for us to rezone it at a certain deal. We don't just automatically do that. So that's at per your request, just like it's per his request. Great question, but John, do you have anything to add?
Chairman Offerdahl, members of the Commission, values extremely difficult to evaluate with any proposal. Generally, a zone change alone from a commercial district to another commercial district is going to have little or no impact on it. And I would defer to our city assessor for the specifics, but I don't believe, at the end of the day, this is upzoning. Generally, when you're adjoining properties are increasing in value, so do the surrounding properties as well. As far as, again, what, what is planned for the community and why participating in the comprehensive planning process, as boring as it may be, is super important, right? And so we've got all of that purple on there with, you see the white with the slash through it, that's the subject property. All that purple that it's kind of embedded within is all downtown fringe. And so that whole, and that does include some existing that would be residential right now. So if you were to come forward and say, you know what, I want to do something in alignment with the future land use map, because the city's plan is to see inevitably downtown is going to continue to grow, and the fringes are going to continue to expand, and this is our mechanism to evaluate what are the limits of that expansion. And since this is within those limits, the fringe area, if you see your property on there, I get aerials and property boundary and stuff, it's not something that everybody looks at all the time, but effectively, it's, it's about one block in off of Burdick is what, and it goes all across Burdick, you know, all the way up until Burdick Viaduct. That's effectively what's planned to expand is the downtown fringe. And there are some homes, present homes, but I mean, cities grow, cities redevelop, and that's just the, the natural segue of, of how the city is likely to, to grow. So how that ties into like property values at any given point is near impossible to...
And I just don't want the extra riffraff around. We've got problems, like Sheila was mentioning, just up the hill from us, there's been issues, let's say, and with, like I said, if you've got a pregnant woman, and I've had family members that have needed help like that. I get that, I totally get that. But if you've got, like, say, a mad ex-person looking for them, what's to say they're not going to be looking in your neighborhood or wandering around or just being pissed and whatever, ripping up down the streets or whatever? I mean, yeah, we can call PD, but they can be there in maybe 10 minutes? That could be too late for whatever, whether it be children or any other thing. So just have some concerns about what's going to be there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the gentleman bringing the facility, do your employees who will be on station at, at this facility, is part of their training crisis management or dealing with unusual situations that, of the kind that could come up, that are the concerns of neighbors?
Absolutely. So that kind of sounds like a de-escalation kind of deal if something's happening there. So our first, our first, what we want to work on is to keep everybody calm, right? So if it takes 10 minutes for law enforcement to get there, we need to keep that calm. Okay, but generally from what I've seen in the past and just in life, is if something's happening like that in a family dynamic and things are going on like that, like it kind of escalates. You kind of see things like that. Like we don't, we don't deal with, we deal with nonviolent drug offenders. That's where we're at on this deal. And if, I, if, if you have a, a partner, like you're saying, that's upset or, or hanging out in the neighborhood, that's when we all come together, and that's when we all make the phone call, and that's when we all get him out of the neighborhood and we report that. I don't think that would just lie on us. I think that would be anywhere that any of us live, not just at this place.
Well, I have called police at different occasions, and it's taken time for them to get there, and by the time they get there, whatever happened is gone, it's done. So I, I just am concerned. Like I said, they've got grandchildren, Merks have grandchildren, we have grandchildren.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's a concern.
I have five grandchildren myself. The thing with, maybe, that would set you at ease, too, is our facility is full of cameras. It record 24/7 and around a 45-day loop. So after 45 days, it goes ahead and it deletes. So any license plate, any person that pulls up, anything like that is all recorded and it's all in there. And nobody comes in the facility and talks to anybody except for a staff member at the front without signing an NDA or any of that kind of stuff, too. So everything is recorded, it's all on the up and up. People aren't just coming and going. Any of the traffic that you were concerned about is going to be people of probation, parole, lawyers, CPS, social workers, medical professionals, things like that. Peer support is a big thing here in North Dakota that we got into now, too. So when you're, and when you're in recovery and you're, and you've been clean for a while, I think a year is the requirement, you can start giving back to the other people who need this. So that would be part of the traffic that would be there, too.
That's how my concern is.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, it's...
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, cameras are fine or whatever, but, and they may catch who did it, but after it's done, it's kind of late, you know?
Sure. So at 10 o'clock, our facility locks. 10 o'clock is curfew. There's nobody in or nobody out unless it's a medical emergency or psychiatric emergency. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Hello, ma'am, can we get your name and...
Hi, I'm Becky Brodel. Live in the neighborhood. Well, this is, I know, off the subject, but it's a whole nother can of worms. Now, you had mentioned that you'd bought the lot next to you. Is that the parking lot, the south one or the other one? Okay, so that's my concern. The old Victorian house is right behind us also. And some people were moving some things in there last week, and my daughter and her husband live right across from there also. So anyway, he said that he was putting in a men's, homeless men's shelter in that home. So that kind of adds a whole nother aspect to our area. So just to let you know, I don't know, you know, what the requirements for them are going to be, but keep that in the picture, because that's also going to change the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on behalf or opposed, in opposition of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Can you state your name and also sign that little sheet there for us? That'd be great.
Hi, my name is Lyle Kicker. I live also in the neighborhood.
Okay.
I stayed at a facility very similar to this in a different state. I just was listening in and I wanted to mention that it should also, I recommend it being, including mental health facilities. That's the reason I went to another one in a different state. I took my own life. It's since helped me, and I have a completely different aspect on life. I stayed there for five months. The staff was very friendly and helpful. Everything was included, all, I didn't have to worry about anything. But I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on behalf or against this agenda item? Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve based on the zoning change, based on staff findings of fact.
I'll second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler, second by Commissioner Longton. Any discussion? I'm just going to add a couple little notes here. One, I want to thank, I mean, on these hard items like this, like Principal Planner Van Dyke said here earlier, this is the most involvement we've been since we've had in this new facility here. So one, I want to thank the public for being respectful, bringing up great points, being cordial, and getting involved, you know? I feel like the discussion was great. It was very good that everybody came up and voiced their opinions. Nobody got angry. We respected everybody, and we came up with this decision. So thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, call it a roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Yes.
Hogalter?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
And Pontanila?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, and then just a quick reminder, once again, you know, to the public that's here, we're merely an advisory board. So this is a recommendation that we're sending up to the city council for final approval. So you'll have your opportunity to, there, also go and share some of your concerns, if you would like, you know, and have a further discussion with a different venue as well. But this is just based on a recommendation that we'll send up to city council. Fair enough? All right. Thank you. So moving on to agenda item number seven. 2023-7-3 zoning map amendment in preliminary plat Highlander Estates, fifth edition. Public hearing request by Ackerman Surveying, applicant representative on behalf of HL Development LLC, owner for the preliminary plat and zoning map amendment. The purpose of this preliminary plat is to subdivide two platted lots into five lots. That will turn it over to city staff for recommendations and findings of fact.
Thank you, Chairman Offerdahl, members of the Commission. So the subject properties are located just west of the Trax development off of 37th Avenue Southwest, and the new Trinity Hospital is located to the southeast across 37th Avenue Southwest. The purpose of the plat is to subdivide, subdivide two lots into five lots, and a portion of right-of-way currently known as 29th Street Southwest is to be vacated via this request. I've highlighted the right-of-way stub that is sought to be vacated, which is shown in red. They're also going to effectively overlay an access easement over that just to provide connectivity to the, the lots. The engineering department has provided some comments on necessary infrastructure and other development-related plans that will be required as part of any development of the site, but I'll go over these in more detail when I provide staff's recommendation. So currently, the subject properties are zoned C2 general commercial and C1 neighborhood commercial. Now zoning map amendment is requested so that the subject properties will be solely C2 general commercial. So many of the properties along 37th Avenue Southwest, as you're aware, are, are zoned C2 general commercial district. Future land use designation for the property is general commercial district, which aligns with the request to C2 general commercial, not surprisingly. There is a small portion, as you can see in the bottom right of the subject properties, that is general mixed use, given the predominance of the general commercial district or general commercial designation of the future land use. Staff finds it's, it's, it's in alignment. It's such a marginal amount that is affected by a general mixed use, we're not going to make them go through a future land use map amendment to evaluate that small piece of, piece of area. Site is presently farmed. You can see construction of the first phase of the Trax in the background of the picture on the right. And these are the findings of fact, and they can be found in staff's written reports. So in short, zoning map amendment satisfies the evaluative criteria. There are some conditions that must be met in order to satisfy the subdivision requirements, the design standards, and again, I'll touch on those in just a minute. And then the planning commission has the authority to, to hear the case and provide a recommendation to city council. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment, and then the preliminary plat, subject to a few conditions, and I'll go over those here. We will need a development agreement. And this would, this would address things such as sidewalk, street lighting, stormwater management plan. These are very typical for urbanized development. Nothing, nothing too remarkable there. We will need a traffic impact study. This is a sizable piece of property that's all going to be dedicated to commercial. So we're going to need to know the impacts on the street network with regard to how that's going to affect downstream, singleization, things of that nature. So 30th Street Southwest, adjacent to the development, must be paved. Rural section, at this time, designed to accommodate the development. Sewer connection fee, is applied to all undeveloped lands that are tapping into the sewer. Of that amount, $4,440 per acre is to be paid at the time of application for a building permit, and the water main must be looped through the development from 30th to 37th. So that would be an also part, what that easement will serve as well. Portions of the parcels are within the floodplain, and of course, the floodplain requirements are going to apply to any development within the floodplain. And then, as is customary and required by code, the financial security would be provided for any of the infrastructure improvements that are going to be conducted, just to ensure that they're not abandoned halfway through, which we have experienced previously. Otherwise, that is it, and I will stand for some, for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this agenda item?
Chairman Offerdahl, commissioners, Rob Barrett on be, with Ackerman Surveying on behalf of the developer, developers in agreement with staff recommendations.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on behalf or in opposition of this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt staff findings of fact and the recommendation.
I'll second.
A motion to, to adopt it by Commissioner Longton and second by Commissioner Menham? Any discussion? No discussion? All right. Call it a roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Hogalter?
Yes.
Iverson? Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
And Pontanila?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number eight. Case 2023-7-5 zoning map amendment, Skyport 12th and 13th Edition. Public rehearing requests by Roscoe Strail on behalf of United Community Bank, North Dakota, for the zoning map amendment of, from R4 planned residential district to R1 single-family residential district, for the purpose of replating the properties to traditionally-sized single-family lots. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Thank you, Chairman Offerdahl, members of the Commission. Thank you, Chairman Offerdahl, members of the commission. Subject properties located in the northwest Minot near Polaris Park and the St. Alexis Medical Center off of Thirty-eighth Avenue Northwest. This is one of those arrested developments that we kind of touched on here and there as they pop up and as we presented on. So effectively, what the proposal is doing is they're rezoning from R-four planned residential, which is one of those legacy zoning districts that we'd love to get away from entirely, but we'll handle them piecemeal at a time. This is the R-four. They're requesting R-one zoning, single-family residential. This would be a, this particular component, as you saw, this part, it's two parts, right? Two separate plats because there's right-of-way and other lots that are not going to be incorporated because they're at least in part owned by different owners. This will be handled via a minor plat after resuming this is successfully rezoned. So this particular one is west of. Yeah, never mind. Well, anyway, it's the one on the left. I can't read the street name on that particular one. This one's going to be a reduction from nine lots to five lots. And the one on to the east is going to be a reduction from ten lots to seven lots. The total number of lots, so for both additions, would go from nineteen to twelve. So a loss of, of seven lots total to accommodate this traditional, single-family residential lot size. So prior, prior to this, that R-four, they had smaller lot sizes. This is a bank-owned property, at least at this time. And so I think from my understanding and discussions with the applicant rep or the property owner of the bank is that they're attempting to make this more marketable, more traditional lot sizes, which is really in high demand, especially in areas where the infrastructure already exists. And so to stimulate actual development activity in these areas where there's like this is arrested development has just remained fallow for, you know, anywhere from seven to 10 years. So it's just had no activity on it in, in quite some time. So the hope is, is that by increasing lot size, opening it up to a broader housing style, you know, a normal, typical, single-family dwelling size and lot, that they will then be developed. And we'll actually see some development activity within this subdivision, which has largely remained fallow for quite some time. So here's the, the R-four planned residential district, as I previously mentioned. You know, these, one of the motivations to just get away from this R-four by and large is because it's administratively cumbersome. Every single development is unique, and I'll show you exactly how unique this is in the next one. So as you can see, this whole sub outside of like the northwest portion right there, that's orange. Everything that's blue is R-four, but that does not mean that it's all single-family residential. So this is another map. Every color that's on there is a unique housing type that is allowed in there. And so to create this map took an immense amount of coordination between engineering and planning. We really would just prefer to see our traditional base zones that we normally have and get away from these R-four. Unless there's some unique requirement to have like a planned development component would just as well be, be done with that. So again, this one, you could have any six-plex, a four-plex, a plex. You could have a multi-family apartment building. You can have single-family, but just scattered throughout this entire development. It makes it administratively very difficult to keep track of all these different developments and the precise dimensional standards and requirements that apply to each lot. We're motivated as staff, obviously, and I think makes it simpler overall. The future land use shows this area as urban residential on the future land use map. This is the, the development facing south and facing north. Here's the findings of fact. So effectively, it meets all the evaluative criteria, and the Minot Planning Commission has the authority to hear the case and provide a recommendation. Staff's recommending, planning commission adopts staff findings of fact and recommend approval to city council with no conditions. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition or on behalf of this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll turn it over to staff or to commissioners for motion.
This is Commissioner Baumann. I'll move to approve based on staff findings of fact and recommendations.
I'll second.
A motion to approve by Vice Chair Baumann, second by Commissioner Longton. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, call it a roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Hogalter?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
And Pontanila?
Yes.
And motion carries.
All right, moving on to agenda item number nine. Twenty twenty-three, seven dash zero one zoning map amendment in preliminary plat for Prairie View Estates, fifth edition, public hearing request by David and Betty Petrie, applicant representative owner on behalf of KJK School Holding Company, owner for the preliminary plat to adjust the shared property boundary between the two platted lots. Each of the existing planned lots resides in different zoning districts prompting the zoning map amendment's request. Zoning map amendment from, is from GMU, general mixed use district to R-one, single-family residential district for that area of land to be exchanged between the two platted lots. That will turn it over to city staff for findings and report.
Thank you, Chairman Offerdahl, members of the commission. Here's the aerial view of the property. This is located also in Northwest Minot off of Twenty-first Avenue Northwest. That's the main road to the north. The new property boundary would extend the applicant's backyard. And so outlined in white is the existing property boundary. You can see the black line that shifted a little bit further to the east of what is the one that's shared between the two. So that's the area in question. So the property to the east is zoned GMU, general mixed use. The property to the west is zoned, single-family residential. In order for them to adjust their shared property boundary, they need a rezone. And so that's why they're here effectively is to rezone it and get approval for that prelim plat. Typically, we would process these as a minor plat. It's very simple, but because they're two different zoning districts, we have it as an exception to the minor plat process. And they have to go, go through that full prelim final process. So staff finds no future land use map amendment necessary given that only a small area of land would be exchanged. Again, we're not going to have them pay additional fee, go through another evaluation just for literally a backyard expansion. This is, this is the prelim plat illustrating the property boundary adjustment and the proposed legal description for the subject properties. This is how it would look. As you can see, they're squaring off the lots, similar to what is to the north and tying into the south. It just, it's surprising it wasn't done this way originally, but that's just how it is. So this is cleaning it up, really. Here's some site photos. You can see the school being constructed facing northeast. And then here's the findings of fact, and they can be found in staff's written report. At the end of the day, staffs recommend approval of the zoning map amendment and the preliminary plat with no conditions. So I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Van Dyke, what, what's the story on that, that, that sort of part of the plat that on the north and sort of diminishes west to a point? A funny thing. Oh, yeah. I would say possibly surveying error is my immediate guess. Looking at Emily here, we, we don't know. At the end of the day, it's accurate. Generally, we wouldn't see it that way. I'm guessing when the west was subdivided, possibly only took what right-of-way we needed as opposed to make sure that we had clean, square lots. I mean, it's still their property. You're not going to take any more than it's absolutely needed just to make it visually clean. But we do have a few tails like this within the city and sometimes it's an error. Sometimes it's because that's how the right-of-way was acquired post-plating, and it just ends up leaving these weird tails.
Thank you. A unicorn. All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in, on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Anybody want to speak at all? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commissioners for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve from Commissioner Hogalter, second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, call it a roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Hogalter?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
And Pontanila?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10. Case twenty twenty-three, seven dash zero one Prairie View Estates, fifth edition, zone change prelim plat. So public hearing, a request by the city of Minot, applicant representative on behalf of First District Health Unit owner for zoning map amendment from R-one, single-family residential district and C-four planned commercial district to public district for the purpose of realigning the zoning with the existing office, clinic, and accessory storage uses on the property owned by the public entity. No change in existing uses is proposed by this zoning map amendment request. That will turn it over to city staff for findings and report.
Thank you, Chairman Offerdahl, members of the commission. Here's the subject properties. They're located on South Side, Eleventh Avenue Southwest, across from Jim Hill Middle School. So surprisingly, one of the properties is actually zoned R-one, single-family residential, the primary site of First District Health. And then they have a secondary site, which is zoned C-four planned commercial. So the actual, the zone change request was actually spurred by a proposal to construct an additional accessory garage. Given that it's a C-four planned commercial district, any new structures have to go through a C-four plan review by the planning commission. Just effectively, an amendment to their plan, originally adopted plan. The city, seeing that the, the properties are zoned, two things that are effectively out of alignment with what the function of the site is, being a public and institutional use, taking it on and submitting an application on their behalf, of course, with their approval to P-public, just to clean up the entitlement and ensure that the use in perpetuity would align with the zoning district of P-public. So the master plan, this would be the master plan that's adopted along with the zoning map amendment. Effectively, you have their office and clinic, accessory storage, the yellow building on the south side, the south lot. That's their proposed additional accessory structure. So, um, yeah, this, the site as it is today, the only change ultimately stemming from this proposal is that yellow, yellow box in the, the second lot to the south. Blue map designates this area as neighborhood commercial. The proposal does align with the twenty forty plan, actually, public. The public zone goes in every flu, future land use designation. So no, no amendment to the future land use is required with this request as it's already in alignment. Here is the facility, if you're not already familiar with First District Health's site. Here's the findings of fact. And planning commission has the authority to hear the case and recommend it be approved or denied. The two things here, so staffs recommend approval effectively with no conditions of the rezone from R-one and C-four to P-public district. And then this also includes the corresponding master plan is provided in exhibit two, that colorful image that I, that I touched on. So I'll stand for any questions if there are any.
Any questions for city staff? Basically, this is just a cleanup, right? I mean, that's a, it's surprising that it's been overlooked that long. Any other questions? That will close, we'll open up the public hearing. Any wish to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Any wish to speak in opposition? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve based on findings of fact and staff recommendations.
I will second.
Iverson? Motion to approve by Commissioner Hogalter, with a second by Commissioner Iverson. Any discussion? See no discussion, we'll call the roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Hogalter?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
And Pontanila?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 11, other business. I believe we have a little item to discuss on other business. Turn it over.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, this is Derek Hackett's last evening with us is helping out with the audio and visual. So say goodbye to him before you leave, if you don't see him around town, but. That's it, so thanks, Derek.
Did we get to silly string them or something out here?
All right, and that was it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
All right, any other, other business? Okay, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned.